Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming to the January 17th, 2024, Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Harpswell. I'm Al Legrum, the Chair, and I'd like to quickly go around the table just to introduce everybody.
I'm Lori Rice on Great Island.
I'm Amy Hybel. I'm from The Neck.
Courtney Snellings from Oars Island.
Christine Donovan-Hall, Oars Island.
And I'm Mark Ironman, the Town Planner.
Okay, and without further ado, I'd like to invite everybody to join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum tonight, and Christine, I would also actually like you to vote. So we have five voting members tonight.
Oh, okay. It's exciting. Told you.
Okay. All right, we have a few items of old business. Just to quickly review the agenda, we have a public hearing meeting dealing with an ordinance change, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. We have a revisit to the Doughty Point subdivision, which we looked at last month, and we're going to revisit that again tonight for some additional actions. New business items, we have a modification that's being proposed in the Cohog Farms subdivision, which we'll deal with. And then we also have an application for a new dock on 20 Dixon's Point Road in Oars Island. And then we have some administrative items to deal with after that. So without further ado, let's move into the public hearing part of the meeting. And this has to do with a change in state law that is going to impact, potentially impact, the ordinance that we have here in the Town of Harpswell regarding elevation of various structures in the flood hazard areas. And Mark, I'll turn it over to you to kind of explain it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, about, I guess, two years ago now, the state legislature, in its wisdom, enacted changes to the shoreline zoning provisions that changed the way height is measured for certain structures, specifically non-conforming structures located within a flood hazard area. Currently, the height of a structure is measured from the ground, existing ground, on the lower side of the structure to the highest point on the structure. The state changed the way that definition of how height is measured for non-conforming structures in the flood plain, coastal flood plain, to say that the height is measured from the sill to the highest point on the structure. So if you are in a steeply sloped, you know, site, that allows that to go up. It also changed another provision that allows a non-conforming structure to be raised to three feet above the base flood elevation. And at the last meeting, you asked me to talk to the town's legal counsel about two things. One, does the town need to incorporate those changes into the town's ordinance? And second, if it does not, does it still have to apply those changes to applications to non-conforming structures in coastal flood hazard areas? Margaret and I talked with Aga Panett, who, I guess we would call her co-town legal counsel, and Aga's take on it was that, one, no, the town does not need to include the revised definition in the ordinance until DEP promulgates new guidelines for shoreline zoning, for shoreline zoning. But the town needs to enforce those provisions on applications for changes to non-conforming structures in the shoreline area, even though they're not in the local ordinance, they're state law. And so Aga's suggestion was that while the town doesn't have to incorporate a change in the way height is measured into the town ordinance, it might make it clearer if it did so. Her suggestion was that we take the draft and run it by DEP shoreline zoning people to see what their response to it is, since her sense, I think, was that they haven't done anything about this change in the state law. So, I mean, the simple answer, in a way, is no, the town isn't required to change the ordinance until DEP changes the guidelines reflecting the change in the state law. But whether DEP does that and whether the town changes it, those are still the rules that apply because that's now the state law.
Okay, so the maximum height right now is 35 feet?
No.
Third?
No. In most cases here, when we're talking about non-conforming structures in the shoreline area, the height is a function of how far the structure is from the highest annual tideline. And if it is in the most common range, it is a maximum of the height of the existing building, measured the way it is now, or 25 feet.
25 feet.
Once you get beyond 75 feet, Margaret, then it goes up to the normal 35-foot height limit.
Okay, so basically, what we're talking about is if this state law purportedly comes to fruition.
No, there's no comes to fruition. It's in state law.
All right, it's a law. So what we were trying to determine at our last meeting was if somebody needed to raise their structure a certain amount of feet, that that might impact the shoreline and other areas because it would exceed what we have in our ordinance right now in terms of maximum height. So the question was asked by a member of the planning board, do we have to, can we stay restrictive in terms of the height that we have in the shoreline in particular to maintain that particular circumstance and not automatically allow people to go up higher, if you will, by virtue of raising the elevation of their property? And so it's an interesting question, especially in light of what's happened in the last several weeks. If somebody wants to come in and put three or four feet of elevation in their property on stilts or whatever, that would raise their property level by a certain amount. And so that kind of prompted the question, well, if that was the case, should we allow the structure to go up three or four feet, or do we want to keep the same height that we have right now in our ordinance? And so I guess what Mark is saying is that the state has sort of acted on this, and I guess it's a done deal from your standpoint. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, I think Aga's counsel was that the state legislature changed the way height is measured in shoreline areas that are subject to special flood hazard designation, and that's the law.
Yeah.
And so the town is, should be enforcing the state law, whether or not that is in the guidelines that DEP promulgates. I would say it's a similar situation where, a few years ago, the state passed a change to the shoreline zoning ordinance that requires before and after pictures to be provided. That has never been added to the state guidelines for shoreline zoning, but DEP will tell you that the town's supposed to be doing that. That's the state law, that you follow the state law even though it's not in the guidelines.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I and Dan were the two planning board members who really raised this issue, and we raised the issue because of our experience as a board, going to look at properties that were right on the shore, in the high-velocity zone or in the flood zone. And those properties were formerly little camps that were surrounded by other, you know, smaller properties. Some of them were a little bit elevated, not directly on the shore. And our thought was that those smaller properties that were traditionally owned by Harpswell residents were being bought by people from other places for a lot of money, and they were going from seasonal units to year-round units or three-quarter seasonal units, and they were going up as high as they could, and people's views of the shore were being impacted. And that if this comes into play, you've got people from the interior of Maine, who are in the Maine State Legislature, who are promulgating these rules, and they don't live on the shoreline, they've never owned coastal property, and they never will, and they don't pay coastal property taxes, but the people around these places do. And they are about to have, perhaps, maybe so, maybe not, their view blocked because of a state regulation that allows people to go to build higher. My suggestion is not to adopt it, to write a letter and coordinate with the Select Board on this, but to have, ask the Select Board to review this, to write a letter to our state reps, to write a letter to the DEP explaining why this is unfair to current property owners who live on the coast, who may very well have their property value and their view obstructed because of a state regulation. People should be required to elevate their properties, no doubt. Anyone that went down to look at Intervale or any place would realize the wisdom of building higher. But just because you can afford to pay premium for a shorefront property doesn't mean you should be able to obstruct your neighbor's viewpoint or your neighbor's view, who's been there for a long time.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. Does anybody from the public want to weigh in on this at this point in time? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, Amy, then, are you saying that the code enforcement officers should issue permits that are in violation of the state law?
That's not my call, Mark. I think that the Select Board should be brought in on this discussion.
Okay, that's, I'm just...
It's not my call.
So if nothing else, this is sort of a, an advisement, if you will, to the public that this kind of discussion is going on, and it potentially is going to impact the way the shoreline, structures on the shoreline of Harpswell maybe are going to look in the future. They might be a little bit higher. And if you have any concerns or issues on this, let us know. There are not, there's not a lot that we can do about it at this point, apparently, based on what the town planner says because it's, the law's passed. But we were just trying to probe to see if, as a community, we could make some adjustments to that to accommodate what we have right now in the town. It's ironic that what's happened in the last several weeks has occurred, and so maybe building higher is the way of the future. But when we say higher, maybe elevating the properties so that there's drainage underneath the property, whether it's on stilts or something else, might be the way that we go in the future. Who knows? But that's just something that we wanted to start with tonight as a public hearing. Does anybody want to comment on this? Yes, ma'am. If you would come up and...
It's just a simple question. I just wonder if a town is allowed to have a more restrictive policy than the state?
Well, that was the question that we asked last month to see if that would be possible. According to what the town planner says, it looks like we are sort of boxed in in terms of being obligated to follow state law.
Being obligated to enforce state law, right? But does that mean you'd have to, you couldn't have something more restrictive than state law? In other words, you couldn't have something, you know, that let you go higher than state law, but could you have something that lets you go lower? It would seem to make sense that you could have a more restrictive.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Aga sort of discussed this today in that this is a case where the legislature intervened and preempted local authority. And so, well, we didn't discuss that particular, could you be more restrictive? Her comment was that, you know, this was a special act of the legislature that includes provisions that are intended to preempt local authority.
So, Mr. Planner, essentially, if you live in a, on a property that's up, a little upland from a shorefront property that's in the velocity zone or the flood plain, and you can see the water from your second floor, and the house in front of you then has to be raised five feet higher in order to create a wash-through area for potential floodwaters, then can they then raise their highest elevation, five feet higher, so then it then blocks your view?
Oh, actually, they can raise it more than five feet higher because rather than measuring the height, then, the height is measured from the sill.
Not the existing sill.
Rather than from the existing ground.
The new sill. The new, the new sill.
Or the existing sill. I mean, it's not...
It could be from a sky dock.
So it does do that. Now, Mr. Chair, based upon what Amy said, do you want to communicate with the Select Board and ask them to take this up in a workshop item to be discussed?
I think that might be a good idea. I think it's controversial enough so that we can, we want to make sure we have clarity and make sure we can communicate that to the community.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, moving on. The next item, it's actually under old business, is a discussion of Doughty Point Road subdivision. We talked about this at the last meeting. This is a small subdivision, quote unquote. It's three lots. And what we determined last meeting was that the application was complete. What we want to determine tonight is whether or not the application conforms to the standards that we have for this particular subdivision. And so with that in mind, let me ask first if the public would like to comment on this particular application. Yes, sir.
John Libby, I just wanted to let you guys know, we had a discussion last week, or last time, about the Schofield's and neighbors to the south of this.
Right.
And so we, we've been in contact, and we've worked something out to work out a buffer between us, so that's all taken care of.
That's tremendous. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I really think you should go to the applicant first because at the last meeting, there were questions about the location of the highest annual tideline and how that impacted the shoreline buffer and the size of the lots. And I really think the applicant should be given the opportunity to address that.
Okay, fine. Would you like to comment, Mr. Schofield? Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry.
Well, he's modified the plan.
Okay, so let's hear, let's hear your comments to that point.
To that point, I did look at the hat line, which is...
Wayne, do you want to introduce yourself?
I'm Wayne Wood, the surveyor on the project for John Libby. And Mr. Schofield had pointed out that we did not show the hat line along the water, so we did go through and look at what the elevation was for that, that he supplied, 11 feet. We then added that line along the front. It's pretty close to where it was, but not perfect. So in lieu of that, this buffer on the front moves back a little further to be the 75 feet from the hat line. And the square footage is of, one of the lots changed slightly, which is the first one, which, this area in here is now out of the area which you need for the purpose of the defining of the hat line and the area of the lots. If you look on it, it still complies, all lots still comply with that, with minor adjustments that we did. Now, the other thing you guys had asked for was the five-to-one ratio, and if you take the width times the length, I've got a note on here that says that these two lots do comply with that, the house at this width, like the depth that we have, and it's 4.9 something to one.
Okay.
I think we're on that. I think everything else was relatively the same as it has been.
Mr. Schofield, do you have any comments that you'd like to...
Skin of the teeth. That's right.
No, I agree with Wayne. I checked the revised plan.
If you'd come up and...
I gotta make more.
Sorry about that. All right. I checked the revised plan before we came in today, and I agree with Wayne that he has shown that the crosshatching area on the plan, that style of crosshatching makes it exceedingly hard to determine exactly which line is in what location. So that, I don't know, once this is recorded, assuming you approve it, and it goes to record at the Cumberland Registry of Deeds, it's going to be probably very difficult for subsequent persons of interest in the property to determine exactly where it is. But it is what it is. The main thing was that we did meet today with John Libby at our house, and we discussed the whole issue of the 10-foot easement and giving us a green barrier of sorts. And we worked out an agreement about planting trees along the property line, and so our objection in that regard has been, is withdrawn.
Okay, great.
But, yeah, it's, they are strange-shaped lots, so it's, but they do seem to comply with the planning board rules and regulations.
80,000 square foot minimum.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
So I don't know the effect of the recent storm surge that we had, which was record-breaking everywhere in Harpswell. So it did, you know, I don't think it got up to the house that John is building. I think that was...
Hopefully not.
Secure. Yeah. But that's it. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate your comments. I'm glad you were able to work something out about the buffer and...
We are too.
Okay. Terrific.
Thank you.
All right. So getting back to what we're really here tonight is to determine whether or not the standards that we have have been met. And the town planner has submitted an input regarding all of the standards that are relevant to this particular construction project. And I'd like to ask, at this point, if anybody on the planning board has any questions or issues with the findings that have been stated by the town planner on this particular They deal with Section 9 of subdivision, our subdivision ordinance, and there are a number of standards that are submitted for the record. I'm not sure we have to go through all of them individually, but I'd just like to ask to make sure that the planning board is, feels comfortable with the findings that the town planner has submitted.
Yes.
Okay, so with that said, I move the planning board finds that the application of John Libby Construction meets the standards of Section 9 of the subdivision ordinance based on the attached findings of fact, which will be incorporated into this motion. Is there a second? Moving to second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Okay, in light of that, I move, in light of these facts, findings of fact, with consideration given to supporting documentation in the record, that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. Planning board finds that the applicant, John Libby Construction, has met the standards of the Town of Harpswell subdivision ordinance. Planning board approves the application to divide Lot 34 on Tax Map 42 into three lots, subject to the following conditions of approval. First, this approval is not final until such time as the final plan has been signed by the planning board and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, together with notice of decision. Second, this approval is based on the plan for the Driftwood Tide subdivision prepared by Wayne Wood and Company, dated January 2024, and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Third, this approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plan contained in the application and supporting documents, which were submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals, and supporting documents, except the minimus changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards, is subject to review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. Fourth, the applicant shall comply with all state and federal rules and regulations that apply to the amended plan. Fifth, any principal structure or any accessory structure that is designated or designed to accommodate overnight occupancy now or in the future shall be equipped with residential sprinklers, being the requirements of the state fire marshal. Prior to the issuance of the building permit for any structure subject to this requirement, the applicant shall provide written documentation that a permit for a residential sprinkler system has been submitted to the fire marshal. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance by the town, the applicant shall provide written documentation from the state fire marshal indicating that the sprinkler system has been installed in accordance with state requirements. And finally, the planning board approval of the subdivision is based on the installation of a community dock to serve the three lots in the subdivision. Therefore, lots one and two are not permitted to have individual docks. The applicant shall submit an application for planning board review of the proposed community docks' conformance with the standards of Section 15.23 of the shoreline zoning ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All right. Sir, we've determined you complied with the standards, and you're good to go. I'm glad you reached an agreement with the abutter and... good to go. I'm glad you reached an agreement with the abutter, and I love it when that happens. Thank you very much.
Wayne, you will need to drop off three unfolded copies of the plan to Margaret in codes, and she will make arrangement with the members of the planning board to sign the plan.
I'll leave them with you tonight.
Okay. As long as they're not folded.
Can I get four?
Cold in there?
Hold on, hold on for a second.
We're good.
Let's put this up.
Yeah.
Oh, you haven't? Okay, all right.
You brought a little...
Okay, our next item has to do with a modification to the Cohog Farm subdivision. Whoops, hold on, hold on, it's gonna fall.
Oops.
One leg's longer than the other.
Glad I don't have that problem.
Beazel has some reading.
There you go.
There we go.
Okay, this is an application to modify some of the conditions that were established when this subdivision was initially laid out, and it has to do with filling in certain portions of wetlands that appear on two of the lots, lots nine and ten in this particular subdivision. And sir, if you'd identify yourself and...
Yes, Kevin Clark from Sightlines. Joe Martin's home playing Mr. Mom tonight. His wife's out of town on a conference, so it was either that, I come, or I watch his kids.
I'm glad you...
So, we'll start off, we're representing Mr. Goulet and Mr. Cormier, or the Cormier and Goulet families. They're the owners of lots nine and ten, sort of co-acted to modify the plan together. There are above twenty-one hundred square feet of additional impacts on lot nine, which are these two small little valleys that are in between the furrows, and that used to be some sort of a farm field, and then a little bit to cross to the second system. We had anticipated that when we designed it, but we didn't know exactly how they were going to lay out the lot, so it's not possible to predict that. And then the impacts on lot ten are about four hundred square feet, and those are just for crossing for utilities from the common transformer and pedestal here at the corner of lot nine and ten to get back to the building window, which is in the rear of lot ten. And Army Corps also threw in a little bitty piece over here that's in a mowed buffer, meadow buffer, and they're saying, since it's a meadow buffer, it's going to be mowed, it's going to change the characteristics, so they're asking us to put that under the ninety-eight square feet in their permit. There's no fee associated with that.
Because it's not over...
They want to keep a track of all of the concurrent or cumulative impacts on the subdivision, so they're considering that as one as well. So they're putting that, that'll come to the town, probably to code enforcement or to mark in an Army Corps permit.
Which lot is that in? I'm sorry.
It's not in a lot, it's in the common area. It's this little space right here.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't see where you were pointing. Thank you.
Yeah, it's very small.
Okay, does anybody from the public have anything to say about this particular proposal? What they're asking to do is fill in some of the wetland areas that have been outlined in these lots, in one case to allow access to...
Access? One case with lot ten is access for utilities.
Okay, and the other one is really to sort of allow a little bit better, how would you describe it, sir?
Access to my test pit, my leak shield.
Okay.
I bought the lot and it was given a leak shield design at the test pit, and it's in the back of the lot.
Yeah.
Building envelopes in the front, and it was approved, there was no, there's no way to get to it without coming back to you guys to ask to cross it.
Okay, let me, I know not everybody here visited the site.
Yeah, it's not much of a...
What struck me about this was that the quote-unquote wetland area that we're talking about is little more than a trench, not much bigger than the size of a large tire. That's the best way I can describe it. That cuts across your property. And so, I know some of the concern might be, gee, we're filling in wetlands. You have, there's a lot of wetland remaining in the back end of your property, even if this is filled in, and I'm not an expert by any means, but I can't see any potential impact that filling in that strip would have on any surrounding area. I mean, the notion of filling in wetlands doesn't necessarily...
Doesn't sound good.
Doesn't sound good, but in this case, I know the people that were there from the planning board, some of whom are not available here tonight, sort of said, well, gee, you know, this, it's basically no wider than this table, maybe a little bit less even in some places, that you're proposing to fill in. So I just wanted to kind of give people who did not have an opportunity to be there that kind of perspective, and open it up to any comments from the planning board or from the public regarding this particular application.
I have a question. Yeah, I'm in a butter, and a couple of my neighbors are here, so that's what brought us here, is the wetlands.
Good.
Filling in wetlands. And so, this seems to be something small, but how do you go about making decisions about filling wetlands? I mean, will you say, oh, well, this is bigger now, so we won't fill it? So what's the, you know, the general feeling about, at what point does it become, we don't want to fill that?
First of all, we don't like to fill in wetlands.
Right.
But there's, isn't there a limit?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there is.
There, in the subdivision ordinance, the subdivision ordinance provides for buffers around certain kinds of wetlands, coastal wetlands, forested freshwater wetlands. When this was reviewed by the planning board, none of the wetlands on this property at the time, the wet meadow wetlands, are protected wetlands under the town ordinance. The planning board had a concern about the fact that there were these identified wetlands and that there were hydric soils throughout the area, and as a result of that, the subdivision plan identified building envelope and an area on the, I guess, I guess that would be the west end of the lot that would be appropriate for a septic system, and on lot ten, a building envelope at the rear, and a driveway location that would be outside of the identified wetland areas. And so, that what was on the approved subdivision plan at the time, that said that on lot nine, you could have your house out front in that area, and you, there was an area out back where you could put a septic system, and essentially the same thing. The question is whether the filling of these wetlands compromise the value, the wetland value, and the ordinance really doesn't address that. I asked the town's consulting engineer, and he said he didn't see any major problem with these limited fills. The property owners, though, have, are under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers, have submitted an application for wetland alteration, and they will look at that issue as to whether there's any significant impact. So this is really a, I would call it a double jeopardy situation, where they would need to get an approval to amend the subdivision plan and to get approval from the Army Corps, or that their Army Corps is not going to take action on it to be able to do it. Clearly, and this is sort of my professional opinion, you know, the fill, the alteration on lot ten is interesting in that it's disturbing the wetlands, but the connection of the electrical line, I believe, will be buried.
That's correct.
And so, I've suggested in here that, you know, as a condition of approval, that those, you know, the surface over the electric line be reestablished. I mean, essentially, you know, we're talking, I think it's a ten-foot wide strip in there, and so that can probably be taken care of. Same thing in terms of the connector between the sewer, sewage disposal area and the house, again, below ground, that could be restored. The issue is really that narrow string wetland immediately behind the buildable area on lot nine, and, you know, the wetland value, whatever it may be, there was lots of discussion about that when the subdivision was approved, and whether there was much value in those wetlands will be compromised, and presumably they will be filled and incorporated into the, into the house site.
I have some questions for you, Mark. At least one of them is for you. What makes a wetland protected versus a non-protected wetland?
In terms of the town, in a subdivision, the ordinance defines various levels of protection and a requirement of a buffer depending upon the type of wetland it is. So, in this case, a wetland scientist, when the original subdivision was approved, went out, said there are three wetlands on the site, this one's this kind, this one's this kind, this one's this kind, this is subject to this kind of protection. This was wetland number two and was defined as a wet meadow, which isn't subject to town protection. Then there's a state NERPA wetland system that says if you're going to alter a wetland, then you have to go through various permitting processes, and essentially, if you alter less than a tenth of an acre, forty-three hundred square feet, you don't need state approval, and so that's the situation.
Okay, unfortunately, I was out of the country for the site walk, so I don't like not having been there, but I think the woman who spoke has a good point. Where do you draw the line for what's filled in? I mean, it makes sense to me that if you have a building envelope here, and the septic can only be here, that you have to get to it. That seems legitimate to me. Yeah. Filling in a finger of it, however, I don't see why that is necessary. So that's where I am on this particular lot. Sir? Maybe Mr. Clark will answer that. I'm sorry, what? Maybe Mr. Clark, I don't know. Well, someone, I'm sure someone has something to say.
Well, the two longer strips, which are...
Yep.
Basically tire ruts or furrows from when it was a farm, are, they want to incorporate that into the fill for the, around the house, to have a little more yard and to be able to grade away from the home, to get positive drainage away from the construction site.
So you're saying it's necessary because of the construction site, or you just want a little bit more land?
Can I address this?
Yeah, sure, please.
Sir, identify yourself, and you're the owner.
My name's Mark Goulet, I'm the president of the Cohog Farm Association. I'm also the owner of lot nine. I purchased the property. The test pit's back here, building envelopes here.
Right.
However, if you look along the front, that's a meadow buffer that parallels the entire site.
Okay.
My building envelopes, seventy-four feet deep.
Okay.
My house is thirty-four feet wide. I want enough room so that I'm not stepping out in the field when I do my front or my back. There's a downward slope to the interior of the lot, so it's going to be very difficult. I'm just looking for thirty feet in the back to have a lawn, not looking to expand my building envelope. It's just, there's quite a few ticks in the field, I want lawn instead of stepping out in pasture.
Welcome to tick country.
Well, I grew up on gunpoint and lawn point, and now I'm going to backlot Cohog, so, I mean, that was my hopes, was to be able to get back a slight distance without extending the, really, I wish you had been at the site visit.
Wish, couldn't.
The width of that rut is about like this, and it's from haying it in the past, it's basically a tire track. Then maybe you can back me up on that, but it's...
That was my impression too. I'm not a farmer, but it wasn't much bigger than a tire.
And, you know, the issue is, is I have to cross, I have to get to the test pit or I have nothing, or I go all the way around and I level a bunch of trees that I don't want to level.
No, I, to get to the test pit, obviously, I don't have any issue with that. It was the filling in that I was wondering about.
Yeah, and so, this front area needs to remain buffer pasture.
Right.
So, when you look at the lot, it looks like a big lot, this lot. Seventy-four feet depth is not a lot to get down into, turn, you know, driveway, empty way in the front, and now, I want to push the house back so it's not stuck right in the pasture, so if I push it back, I have zero backyard. So it's kind of, it's a very tight lot.
Just a question, do you have any, what is the total square footage of the wetlands on your property? Do you have any idea?
On Mark's, it's, give you the exact, it's twenty-one hundred and forty-six.
That's the alteration.
That's the alteration.
Total, yeah.
Total.
Total, of all the wetlands that are identified, there are three. There's one large wetland in the very back, and then there's two kind of narrow strips.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's... I don't, I don't, haven't calculated that. Why is that more than...
It's like one percent or five percent. It's a small amount, it's a very small amount. I calculated, I can't remember what it was, but it's very small.
Yeah, and the other, the other thing that we wanted to make sure of was that this would not impact any abutting property in terms of runoff and things like that, and it's difficult to envision that that would happen based on what I saw.
No, I mean, what you're going to see...
Because everything drains...
Right.
Toward the three-twenty-four, basically.
And, you know, the line, everything, it's either going to be pasture or lawn, and it's going to be pretty much at the same grade.
Yeah. Amy?
I have four points that I just want to raise.
You want me to stay up here?
No, you can sit down. The first thing I want to say is, we approved a site plan based on engineering, good faith, we all walked the site, and we understand that, you know, there are times... And we understand that, you know, there are times when things change in the field. But you bought this property knowing what, what was going to happen. And now we're, we're coming in and asking for wetlands to be filled. I, I just want to finish.
Let me back up and tell you what I bought. I bought a property that had a septic design in the back, wetland fingers. Then I became the president of the association, went through the covenants pretty, pretty thoroughly, met with Mark to discuss the meadow buffers. And then, having done development in the past
Can you step up to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Otherwise, you're not getting recorded.
And then, and then having development in the past, the wetland fingers and reading the covenant, covenants, I realized they never provided a way for me to get my test pit.
Yeah. I, I sympathize with you and I probably will vote to, to approve this, but I do have some points I'd like to make
Sure.
if you'll allow me to.
Yeah.
We, we approved this plan based on the best information that we had at the time. We always do that, we do that in good faith. And we're always willing to come back in and, and take a look at things if they need to be taken a look at.
Thank you.
When I was the planning director for the town of Brunswick, I spent the, spent the first six months of my tenure in that job, working with a subdivision that Mr. Slattery had built. And people went in and as, as, as happens, became sort of their own landscape architects in a, on a subdivision that had some drainage issues, as I'm sure this will. And they ended up altering little drainage courses and flooding their neighbor's basement or creating a pond in their neighbor's lawn. And it became a nightmare. So I'm trusting that that won't happen here.
I promise.
You're looking to fill 30 feet.
Yeah.
That's a fair amount.
Yeah.
But especially when drainage might or might not be that great. But, but I, you know, your argument is a good argument and, and then I probably will support what you're trying to do, but I'm
Thank you.
It's just a point that I want to make. Because people tend to come in and say, oh, you know, I don't like the way my lawn is draining, so I think I'm going to do a little work and carve a little natural channel out here and have it drain somewhere else. That, that does tend to happen. The other thing I want to say is that this was not some sort of farm field. With all due respect to you, and I know that you're great at your job, but this was an historic farm in the town. It was one of the most beautiful coastal
I agree.
properties that exists in Harpswell. And it's now 11 house lots, which is done according to the rule and we approved it. So there is a movement afoot to, from the comprehensive planning task force to reduce the size of subdivision lots in the town, if there's two bedrooms or less, to about 40,000 square feet, which is half the size of these lots. I want to just make that point to the planning board, to anyone who's listening, please stay on top of what the task for, is, task force is doing. If these lots were half the size that they are now, there would be serious drainage problems on them, probably. So I just wanted to make that, those four points and, you know, good luck to you and I hope you enjoy your time there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to comment from the board.
I do have just one quick question, because we were talking about how it drains off to the back toward Route 24. Water drains.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the building envelope on Lot 10, adjacent to yours.
Yes.
Because it looks like he's doing downhill, so
His, his water drains on the my lot.
Okay. That was, I, Clay did not make the site walk.
Yeah. And I don't have any objection with him, him running his utilities out.
So those, those fingers run sort of level
Right.
across the two lots. This lot drops from road, and then it raises up. Dips down, is lower in the middle than where this building site is, it raises up.
Yeah. I'm just looking sure that it's not doing this on the side, so if you do it, it doesn't inadvertently
It's, it's, his water's likely going to come on my lot, but I'm okay with that.
It's a good point, though.
No. Just wanted to make sure of that.
It's probably going to go back and forth. Because it's going to, water finds its own level.
Oh, I know it does.
So, and it's pretty level through that whole section.
Right. Because he's belled to the back, so he's going to be more likely impacted on that. And that was just a concern.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, I'm going to run through these approvals fairly quickly. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, and I'm really nervous, so kind of bear with me if I stumble and
We look like we have authority.
Go all over the place. I, I, yeah, I'm sure that you all know, in aware, that precipitation
What's your name?
Whether it's rain, snow.
Marilyn.
Oh, my, I'm sorry. My name is Marilyn Sinski and I am, live on, on Copati Trail, so I'm, guess one of the abutters, or my son is, let's put it that way, in his family. So anyway, precipitation, whether it's snow, rain, sleet, or whatever, is the only source of well water in Harpswell. The wetlands collect, collect the precipitation and allow it to absorb into the ground as opposed to just plain running off. Wetlands function as natural filters for the precipitation that does seep into the ground and finds its way into the Harpswell wells. According to the Harpswell Town website, it is recommended to protect and increase infiltration of precipitation into the ground. Nowhere is the decrease of wetland zonings or amendments recommended. Rezoning or amending them, amended, amending established wetlands to allow any modifications will reduce the collection of well water in Harpswell. The wetlands in question tonight were established and known to the current owner, I apologize, but anyway, prior to the purchase of the property. Rezoning would set precedent for future applications. Both sides of the Island, Harpswell Island's road have, have wetlands in them. I think it would be troublesome to set a precedent so that potential property owners might be led to the belief that by, by now, and we can ask for rezoning later. Further, it's not only the wetlands and the collection of water, there are the, an abundance of wildlife and plant life in that area, along both sides, including larger animals, which we all do. Deer, fox, birds, and porcupines. In fact, this specific area is quite close to portions defined as significant wildlife habitat and both the Atlantic Northern Forest Bird Conservation Plan and the North American Water Fowl Management Plan. They have identified the loss of wetlands as the primary threat of water beds to Maine. Rezoning or amending and thereby reducing the wetlands in Harpswell is no small matter and could have repercussions for generations, both in habitat loss and the loss of freshwater collection. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay. Appreciate those comments. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
I'm Brenda Kelleher and I live on Copati Trail. Alan, when you began this discussion, you said with humility that you don't really know anything about what it means to disrupt a wetland. It was then mentioned by Mark that there is an Army Corps permit that's involved in this process.
That's correct.
Are they charged with responding to the comments that Marilyn made? Will the Army Corps recognize the necessity to evaluate the impact on the wetland?
The answer to that question is, what is said at this meeting will not be transmitted to the Army Corps as part of their permit process.
Does their permit process take into account the biological significance of the wetland?
That's what their permit process does.
Okay. So there's a chance that their view will be that this is not ecologically appropriate. They may choose to deny those four reasons of biological stability. Is that true?
I mean, I can't say whether they would deny it on a specific ground or not. Kevin, do you want to address the core permit?
Yeah. The core permit is, I think we were drawn into that out of interesting situation, because these are isolated, they're not connected to anything else.
Right.
And according to the core rules, these would not even fall under their jurisdiction. But they're claiming that despite the ground being higher here, the wetlands ending there and more wetlands being here, they're saying because the water may travel through the ground to the other wetlands, it's connected, which is against their rules, which says it has to be connected above the ground. But that's either here and there. So they have taken on the regulation of these
Oh, okay.
particular. They made field determination and, and this is a relatively small impact compared to those. They usually do not do anything until you're over 5,000. They, they would charge impact fees if you're over 5,000. For DEP, we're still under the 4,300. These are not coastal wetlands, they're not forested freshwater wetlands, so they don't come under a full tier permit. They would come under that permit by rule up to 4,300. We're well under that for the entire subdivision, that a total of 2,700. So we're still under that tenth of an acre for the entire subdivision.
Interesting.
Okay. So another way of looking at it is that, to the point about precedence and, and wetlands and so on, there, there's a certain amount, there are limits as to what you can do relative to wetlands. Specifically, the limits that you stated in terms of square footage and so on.
Square footage, that's really how they regulate. And that's how they consider impacts. The more, the bigger areas you impact, obviously, the more environmental impact you have. And once you reach different thresholds, they charge you fees to use on projects in other areas to enhance or restore wetlands.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I do want to just say, though, I want to really appreciate your, your care and your concern for the habitat and the wildlife on this land that don't get to come up here and speak for themselves, because this was a really beautiful piece of property. And it, the DEP regulates larger sized wetlands, but we all know that the, the incremental effect of, of impacting smaller wetlands, a greater number of smaller wetlands has an, has a, an incremental effect that may be large. And so, and lots of wildlife really depends on smaller wetlands, not just larger ones. The DEP bid off as big a chunk as they could in order to protect Maine's environment, but they were, they got a lot of pushback and have backed off. So, you know, regulating smaller wetlands may be something that the town of Harpswell wants to try to do, just increasing setbacks from smaller wetlands. It's just something that we, we might want to think about, because you're right, that is part of where we get our drinking water, so. But this particular development complies with all the rules.
Yeah.
Just an editorial comment. For several of us who were on the board when this property sold and then was subdivided into lots, it was, it was painful.
It was. It was really painful.
Because, because we knew that it was going to result in changes to that particular property, and it was a beautiful piece of property. But I keep going back in my mind to the fact that the family made a decision
Yeah.
to sell that land. And so they, after living on this property for decades, probably, I don't know how long
The family was, the farmhouse that was taken down was hundreds of years old.
And so they made a decision to sell the property and then it now gets caught up in the machinery of what we're dealing with right now. I think, and the reason that, that this is important, and it's coming up now, is because we are sensitive to the fact that
Yeah.
wetlands are important to Harpswell. Groundwater's important to Harpswell. Natural resources are important to Harpswell. The question is whether, what's being asked for now is within the limits of what is deemed acceptable, if you will, in terms of nibbling away, if you will, at the, at the square footage of wetlands on this particular property. And it's, you can argue both ways. And I just, let, let me leave it at that. I said it was an editorial comment. None of these, none of these questions are necessarily straightforward, black and white, so. But I appreciate everything that's been said and there are important discussions that we need to keep in mind if situations like this appear in the future.
I have another question, though. It doesn't have to do with wetlands, but
Okay.
I wanted to ask you, did you say that the transformer is shared, the electrical box is shared by the two?
It may actually be more than, normally
I was just wondering
Normally, they're set
Yeah.
at one lot corner. And they're usually set so that you can serve at least two, often as many as four. It depends on if the lot lines line up across the street and so forth.
Yeah. I had just wondered why it was there, because it's now going to have to cross in order the wetlands in order to get to the
It crosses to the other lots as well.
Right. As to why it wasn't on the other side.
We don't have much control over that. That's CMP.
Okay.
We have to bring them out on these projects.
Okay.
And they lay it out and say, we want this many houses on this one and we want it here and
Okay.
And that comes after the fact.
Good to know.
But that's definitely a consideration.
Anything else? All right. We, we are going to go through these standards. There are two sets of standards, one of state standards, the others are local standards. I'll try to identify each and sort of give some rationale, one way or the other, about whether they seem to meet the standards or not. The first set of standards deal with state statutory review standards. And in the opinion of the town planner, they are not, they are not applicable to this particular application. And I'll go quickly through them. There's state standard one dealing with pollution. State standard three dealing with municipal water supply since no additional laws will be created as a result of this. State standard seven dealing with municipal solid waste, which does not apply. State standard 10 dealing with financial and technical capacity since the gentleman, the applicant owns the property. State standard 11, surface waters and outstanding river segments. None of these apply in this particular application. Farmland, again, does not apply. State standard 16, river, stream, or brook. None of these resources are in this particular application. State standard 20 dealing with the impact on adjoining municipality. Obviously, this is within the town of Harpswell in the subdivision, so that doesn't apply. So I would like to make a motion with respect to what I just covered, that the planning board finds that the follow, those state standards are met since they do not apply to this application. Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
I don't know, it's just strange we have to vote on that.
Well, I want to be
I know. Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Since people came here and they're concerned about this, I want to go through
Yeah. I just love it when subdivisions call it, calls them, you know, Orchard Lane subdivision, because the orchard is gone. There's no farmland that applies here, because the farmland is gone.
It's not what used to be.
Yeah. Were you going to say something, Mark?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On advice of legal counsel based on a number of court cases, the main courts have said that the planning board needs to make a determination as to whether each and every standard laid out in the state subdivision standards or a town's own ordinance are met.
That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing.
I understand. I'm just saying.
I was just laughing.
That's why we do it.
That's why I, I volunteer for the planning board so I can, I can get on my soapbox every once in a while. And I do.
All right. So we've gone through the first set of standards, state standards, which we determine are not applicable to this application. So we've gone through the first set of standards, state standards, which we determine are not applicable to this application. Next, the following factors are subject to both state and local standards. And I would like to make the following motion as I go through this. I move the planning board finds that the following, state and local standards are met since they were addressed in the prior approvals for this subdivision and are not applicable to this particular application. They are as follows. State standard two, dealing with sufficient water. And local standard 9.6.2 dealing with water supply since the amendment will not create any potential for additional development. State standard four dealing with erosion. And local standard 9.7 dealing with erosion and sedimentation control since the owners will address erosion and sedimentation control when building permits, permits for the structures are issued. State standard five dealing with traffic. And local standard 9.15 dealing with traffic since the amendment will not create any potential for additional traffic. State standard six dealing with sewage disposal. And local standard 9.6.3 also dealing with sewage disposal since the amendment will not create any potential for additional sewage generation. State standard eight dealing with aesthetic, cultural and natural values. And local standard 9.14 dealing with aesthetic, cultural and natural values since the amendment will not impact any significant resources in those regards. State standard 12 dealing with groundwater. And local standard 9.11 dealing with the impact of groundwater since the amendment will not create any additional use or discharge to the groundwater. State standard 13 dealing with flood areas. And local standard 9.9 dealing with construction in flood hazard areas since the amendment does not allow for any development within the flood hazard area. State standard 17 dealing with storm water. And local standard 9.12 dealing with storm water management since the existing subdivision plan addresses storm water management and the owners are required to address storm water management as part of the building permit for the structures on the lot. State standard 18 dealing with spaghetti lots, which are prohibited. And local standard nine, 9.19 dealing with spaghetti lots, which are also prohibited under local standards since no new lots are being created. And finally, state standard 21 dealing with land subject to liquidation harvesting. And local standard 9.20 dealing with liquidation harvesting since the area has not been harvested. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, movement seconded that these standards are met. I'll call for any discussion. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the following state and local approved standards are relevant to this particular application. They are as follows. State standard nine dealing with conformity with local ordinances and plans. And local standard 9.1 dealing with conformance which states that all proposed developments must be in conformity with all pertinent local, state and federal ordinances, laws and regulations. With regard to these standards, I move the planning board finds that the standard, standards are met based on the following. Both lots nine and 10 will continue to meet the dimensional standards for a lot in the subdivision. State standard 14 dealing with freshwater, freshwater wetlands. And local standard 9.19 dealing with the impact on wetlands, which we'll talk about in a minute. But let's go back to the previous standards, which, there's a motion that I've made that the planning board finds that standards of conformance relative to lot size have been met. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, movement seconded, ain't discussion about that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The next set of standards dealing with freshwater wetlands and local standard, standards dealing with the impact on wetlands is really at the core of the matter here. And it says that subdivision plans shall be designed to minimize impact on wetlands. Local standards basically say the same thing. In particular, it talks about setbacks relative to septic systems. It talks about setbacks of 75 feet from water bodies, tributaries, streams or the upland edge of a coastal freshwater wetland. And at least 25 feet from the upland edge of a forested wetland. Further, if the local plumbing inspector upon review of written evidence submitted by a soil scientist licensed to practice in the state of Maine, determines that the only practical alternative for a specific subsurface wastewater disposal system is within 75 feet of the setback from the upland edge of a coastal or fresh land, freshwater wetland or within 25 feet of a setback from the upland edge of a forested wetland, the planning board may waive the setback requirement for that specific subsurface wastewater disposal. That does not apply in this particular case. Further states that except for, as specifically approved by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection and United States Army Corps of Engineers, roads shall be located to avoid crossing a wetland, tributary stream or water body and must be set back at least 250 feet from the upland edge of a moderate or high water, high value wetland or at least 75 feet from an upland edge of a coastal or freshwater wetland. And 25 feet from an upland edge of a forested wetland. That does not apply in this particular case. Any cutting of vegetation or timber harvesting in a wetland area described in this section or within the setbacks outlined above shall be conducted in accordance with section 11.15 of the town's basic land use ordinance or where applicable, section 15.14 of the shoreline zoning ordinance. With those comments in mind, I move the planning board finds that this standard is met based on the following. The proposed amended plan will allow the filling of 2,146 square feet of wetlands on lot nine and 412 square feet on lot 10. And Mark, you mentioned that this is less than
It's about 6.6%.
0.6% and the limit is
Of the wetlands.
Of the wetlands, and that, and that's limited to 10%. So there's, it's below the, the amount that's limited.
Yeah, I don't know where Amy's 6, what 6% is.
Yeah, no, I was measuring it by the, by the lot size.
Oh, right.
So I'm off, I'm way off.
So we're below, we're below the limits that, that we're allowed to go up to in a case like this. Just want to make that point.
I mean, the lots are over 80,000 square feet.
Right.
Yeah.
And so
Yeah.
So this is on, on lot nine, this represents about 3% of the lot area. And on lot 10, it represents less than 1% of the lot area.
Yeah.
Half of.
Okay, so, next. The filling will not have a significant impact on the string wetland system provided that the disturbed wetland area for the sewer and electric corridors is re-vegetated with wetland vegetation. Important point. The revision will not change the location of the septic systems on either lot. And the amendment is acceptable as long as the applicants receive approval from the Army Corps of Engineers for the proposed wetland alteration. This is a motion. I'll ask for a second to that motion.
Second motion.
Any discussion from the board on any points?
Yes, I do have discussion. I don't see anything here that specifically relates to filling that particular finger that's not one of the ones affected by the electrical line or the sewer line going underneath. I'm still uncomfortable with filling part of the wetland. Sorry.
I wish you'd have gone out and seen it. It's really nothing.
I can only go by what I, by what I see here. And I
I mean, I'd invite them to come see it.
Well, I certainly agree that the electrical line and the sewer line, you have no choice.
All right.
Has to be there. And of course, things would be, you know, covered. And I'm only one voice here on the board, but I'm uncomfortable with that particular thing.
Could we ask, Mark, Mark, are these, other than being on a subdivision plan, would these wetlands be under the jurisdiction of the town?
No.
Okay.
And the reason is because of the size of them.
And the value of them?
No, the ordinance really doesn't address the value. It addresses, for freshwater wetlands, it addresses the size of the wetland.
Should address them.
So the, the motion that's been made is that the impact on wetlands, the wetlands that have been reviewed here is within the limits and the guidance that we have in terms of approving modifications to, to a plan like this.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Just sort of an answer to that question. When the subdivision was originally presented, there was significant discussion about whether this area across these two or three lots were wetlands or were not wetlands. They are mapped as hydro soils, but there was a wetland evaluation done that determined that the actual areas that met the definition of wetlands were only the depressions, the strings. But those wetlands, if they were not in a subdivision, would not be a consideration in terms of what happened to them, for better or for worse. If they were on somebody lot and, you know, somebody wanted to regrade the lot, those would not be considered because they don't meet the size threshold for any protection. There was, at that time, fairly extensive discussion. And the applicant agreed to designate the building envelopes on the sites and that the alteration would be limited to those areas. And the rest of the lots would be left. The metal, the buffers along the road are part of the storm water mitigation provisions to provide for reducing the runoff from the site. So, you know, I, I would say in a way, the regulatory status of these wetlands is sort of in never, never land with respect to the, the town in that they're not really covered by the town ordinance. But the applicant at the time agreed to restrict the development on these lots so that it would not include these wetland areas.
Okay. Okay, any other comments? So we have a motion, it's been seconded, that basically says that the impact on wetlands is minimal and meets the standards, local standards that have been established to modify, but make modifications, appropriate modifications. It's been seconded, we've had discussion. Any further comments? All in favor? Board of lords?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just so, when we get to the approval motion, there are conditions
Exactly.
related to these things that I've suggested in there.
Exactly. And we'll make sure we, those, those come out. Okay, the next standards are stand, local standards that are not applicable. And I want to go through these things quickly. These are standards in the subdivision ordinance, town subdivision ordinance dealing, first of all, 9.4.3, flexible lot size subdivision, does not apply in this case. 9.18 workforce housing does not apply in this case. Municipal services does not, does not apply since these modifications do not involve creation of additional lots. Preservation of landscape, since the amendment will not change the configuration or the number of lots. 9.4 dealing with lots, since the amendment does not involve the creation of additional lots. 9.5 dealing with land not suitable for development since the amendment does not involve creation of additional lots. Seems to be a consistent theme here. 9.6 dealing with required improvements. In particular, dealing with lot markers and fire protection. These requirements do not involve the creation of any additional lots or fire protection demands. 9.8 dealing with utilities since the amendment does not involve any creation of additional lots. 9.13 dealing with offshore lands does not apply in this particular case. 9.16 dealing with homeowners, landowners association since the lots are part of an approved subdivision. And 9.17 dealing with community lots, community docks, I should say, since there, there's no change in the proposed involvement of community docks. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the things that I've outlined are not applicable to this particular application. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, and there are no other standards, local standards that apply specifically only to this particular application. So with all of that in mind, I'd like to move that the planning board reaches the following conclusions in light of the facts that we discussed with consideration given to the supporting documentation in the record. Planning board finds that the applicant's Mark Goulet, Goulet? Goulet, Robert Goulet, Mark Goulet. And Philip, you can't sing, okay. And Philip and
Mr. LaGrou, really?
Yeah, I know.
Give me a break, huh?
Come see, come see. Mark Goulet and Philip and Catherine Cormier have met the standards of the town of Harpswell subdivision ordinance. The planning board approves the application to amend the previously approved subdivision plan to allow the filling of a total of 2,756 square feet of wetland on lots 122-9 and 122-10 as shown on tax map 46, as shown on subdivision plan amendment four for the Cohog Farm subdivision. First, this approval is not final until such time as notice of decision is signed by the chair of the planning board and has been filed in the Covellin County Registry of Deeds. Second, this approval is based on the approved plan prepared by sightlines dated July 18, 2023 and are all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Third, this application is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plan contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals and submitted supporting documents is subject to the review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. Fourth, this approval is conditioned on the applicant's receiving approval of the Army Corps of Engineers for the proposed wetland alteration. Fifth, and finally, this approval is conditioned on the applicant's restoring and re-vegetating any disturbed wetlands in the sewer and electrical corridors with appropriate vegetation. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but I have a question as well.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
My question is on four, it's not so, so hard. But on five, who checks this? I know that it's the COE's office jurisdiction, but I, you know, we've brought, we've talked about this before many times where we, we approve something with conditions, but there's no feedback about whether the condition that we've, that we've levied on the approval or attached to the approval is met. And I just wonder, is there a tickler file that the COE's office has? That, is the planner informed when the, the process has been met? And I know with the Army Corps, it's a different thing. But when there's a, a condition of approval that the planning board sets, how does the planning board know that the vegetation has been restored?
Actually, they're normally, our Army Corps, we have to fill out a, a form letter and return it to them after.
Yeah.
But also Yeah.
It's part of the plan, it's part of the permits you're handing me when I build the house.
Let's, let's talk about this.
Yeah.
I mean
The Army Corps, as I said, is an easy one. That's an easy one.
Yeah.
But the, the, the other ones are, the other one is, I just would like to hear what the process is. the process is.
It's really cold.
I was here to get warm.
Oh, my God, it's so cold.
Margaret, get double pay for being in there.
I know, there's no heat back there. I would just say that we would put it as a condition of approval for the building permit, so that when we go to do the certificate of compliance or certificate of occupancy, the final inspection, that would be one thing, so it would be right on the top of the list of something that we could check before the final permit is issued. But no, there's no file of all the conditions that the planning board has left for us, but, you know, especially with these-
Although, all these things are, all these things are part of the record in terms of a notice of decision, so they're-
Right, and the new, these newer subdivisions, you know, we're, you're going through and reading the subdivision approval as we're issuing the building permits, reviewing the building permits, so that we're trying to make sure that we are, you know, hitting every, every point that you guys make.
So, here's what, what I, what I have suggested in the past, and I don't know, you may do that, but for each file, for each application and for each approval, there's a checklist for conditions of approval. You should be able to go in and look at that file and see, this condition was met on this date. Check off, and, and the copy of the inspection is there in the file. And this one's made, and do you, is, would it be possible for us to go into your file and find that?
Not for your conditions of approval, no.
No, so how would we know that our conditions of approval? If I, if I wanted to go in in a year and say, has that condition of approval been met, how would I know that it's been met? What, what record would I find that I would know that's been met?
It probably wouldn't be a written record, it would just be something that Tim would, you know, we'd make it a condition of approval of the building permit, and then when Tim does his final inspection, he would just look to make sure that's done before we issue the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so, I'm not suggesting that it's your responsibility, but I think it's the planning, it should be the planner's responsibility to, to make a file of all of these conditions of approval by year, and then coordinate with the Coes Office so that the planner checks off that every plan that the planning board has approved has its conditions of approval met. And we should be able to go into the planning office and get that file and see that there's been coordination with the Coes Office. I, I really think that is, is important. It's going to be more and more important as time goes on.
Okay.
I agree.
Let's keep that in mind, and, and I think for the purposes of this discussion, it's a little bit beyond the scope, but let's keep it in mind, I think it's a, a good point. So, I want to-
Opportunity for improvement.
Yes, and I want to circle back, we have a motion to, to approve this application-
Can I add something on the date of the plan?
Yes.
You had the original date, and it should be a revision date of December 13th, 2023.
Is that on the plan?
No, that was the date of the submission, but I'll add that, I'll add that to the plan as well.
We had July 8, we had July 18.
So, there is no revision date on here?
No, that was the date it was submitted, so what I would do is revise it and add a revision date on there.
Okay.
Okay, so subject-
Just so that we have that for the rec, because going back to July is not accurate.
And, and so, the date on the plan that you will give us to sign will be?
December?
Today.
December?
No, today. Or I can, I could date it December 13th as well, whichever you prefer.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't have to be the same day.
The only thing is, is what the, the plan that's in the file-
Needs to match.
And go to the registry, and the date that's in the, in the notice of decision need to be the same.
Yep.
It doesn't matter what they are.
Let's make it, the revision and the date of the signature be December 13th, 2023.
December 13th, so your motion should be amended.
Subject to that amendment, consideration of the emotion that I made with that, with that particular amendment, it's been, can we have another second?
Yeah, I second that.
Second that amendment, okay?
December 13th.
All those in favor? Okay, four, four, one against. And so, we've approved this particular request. Ladies, if you have a chance, I'm sure the applicant wouldn't mind if they took a walk up there and looked particularly, in particular, what we're really talking about here with this particular amendment. It's, it's quite a bit different than if you're looking at a, a plan, a piece of paper and so on. I think it makes a difference, and, and I want to make sure that you understand that we take these things very seriously. Wetlands is important to the town, so we don't do this lightly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have one other item of business to, to discuss, yes, ma'am?
Could not do that.
We have, we haven't recorded, we've recorded it.
Oh, yeah, you were in the mic. No, you were fine.
You didn't stutter.
It's videotaped, and you will be on TV.
So, I have to admit, looking at it, yeah, the houses there, you're going to have to change it.
Do you know where you are?
And change it.
Just don't go through this door, because the alarm's like, no, no, you're good. Lock that door and then take the left, get out, absolutely, and they'll take you around to the front.
Okay, everybody, we have one more item of business before we move on, and that's, we have an application before us from Douglas Warren and Pamela Berry, 20 Dixon's Point Road. The application is to build a dock, and it's a fairly large dock, lengthy dock. A number of us have visited the property, in particular, the, the lot has 190 feet of shore frontage, and the applicants are proposing to develop a non-commercial wharf for their private use. It consists of a series of landings and stairs measuring four feet wide by 65 feet long, and the lower end of the steps will connect to a five-foot wide by 80-foot long pier, a three-foot wide by 50-foot long seasonal ramp, and a 10-foot by 20-foot seasonal float. So, it's a fairly good-sized wharf and, and dock structure, and I'd like at this time to invite Mr. Forrester to address the project.
Yes.
Outline any critical things that you think we need to know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'm Tim Forrester, I'm an environmental consultant here with Flycatcher on behalf of the applicant. So, I would say what you said is an, is accurate. They have a relatively long section of forested upland from the backside of the house in order to get down to the shoreline, which takes an abrupt drop down in, onto exposed ledge, followed by a rockweed-covered ledge. And then there's, as you head out across the inner tidal, it rises back up, there's a little, you know, some more rockweed-type ledge, and then reaching the edge of mean low water, where then there's a, a long-drawn area of shallow subtitle. It would be exposed on negative tides, but in order to land the float just beyond that and keep it in the water and off any substrate, that's what really drives the length of the proposed dock. So, you know, the first section of 65 feet is really all through the woods, and it's just stairs to take it down to the shore. And then we've kept the pier to the length necessary in order to land the float in the There, so, so there's no, there's no salt marsh that we're going over, there's no eelgrass, it's all ledge and rockweed-covered ledge. The pier's supported on piles, these are eight-inch by eight-inch piles, that'll be drilled and pinned into ledge. Bob Waddle is the proposed builder. And then the, the ramp, which is 50 feet long, slightly longer than a typical, most ramps are around 40 feet, but we wanted to keep the pier as short as possible and keep the seasonal aspects, which we can retract in the off-season, so we have a 50-foot ramp, and then a proposed 10-by-20 float, which is a pretty standard float size. The ramp can be stored on the pier in the off-season, and the float would be hauled Currently have applications before the Army Corps of Engineers and the main DEP, so those are, those are currently under review.
Yeah, the site, the site was interesting in a couple of regards. First of all, just, just a couple of comments, there, there are a number of other docks that owners have constructed in this particular area of Lols Cove, and I'm not sure if anybody regrets the fact that they've done that in light of what happened here, but nonetheless, there are docks on either side of this proposed dock wharf system. This is not a subdivision, therefore, you know, anything about a community dock or anything like that does not really apply. The other thing that I, I was struck with was the fact that there's a fairly dense tree coverage between the house and the water. I mean, it's, it's fairly, it's not impassable, but it's fairly thick, it's pretty substantial. And so, they, you'd be cutting a path through, through that. Do you have any idea how many trees you'd have to take down to?
Yeah, we do, we actually, that was one of the driving reasons of where we chose the location, was the easiest way to navigate through the woods without taking down any of the mature trees, so we are not taking down any of the large, large-stan trees. There are, I believe, three smaller diameter trees, probably three to four-inch diameter, so something about that big around is all we need to take out.
Okay, does the, I don't see anybody from the public here. Does the board have any questions? I draw your attention to the findings that the planner has provided, suggesting that the, the standards that we have locally have been, in his opinion, met. Do you have any issues or questions with any of those findings?
I just have a, have a question. I see, I'm looking at your drawing here. I'm wondering about, oops, it's upside down, I probably would help to put it the right The material, the piles, the pilings, what are those going to be made of?
Yep, so these are eight by eight, they are, they're pressure-treated, it's a marine-grade pressure-treated pile, standard for the marine industry for this type of construction. If you use other products, you know, they're more susceptible to boring worms that will destroy and damage and ruin the pier in a short period of time. Any, any pressure-treated lumber that's used in a marine application is required to be fully cured before it's installed, which reduces the amount of potential leachates that can come out of the lumber.
Yeah, that, that was really my concern, I know other states have other standards and whatnot, but-
For the most part, it's, it is a heavier grade that's used for the piles, because they're the ones that are submerged, where the deckboards, the stringers, all the other components of the dock are out of the water more, so they're, they're a less, less coated, less treated material.
Yeah, it's the pilings, I, I mean, I was just concerned about, you know, leaching out and wonder what, obviously, nobody wants to spend money putting up something that's going to be eaten by worms in a couple of years, that's crazy. I just didn't know whether there was anything, whether thought had been given to using other material, if it were even possible, something that would not, I know it'd be more expensive, but I'm just-
Well, the old-school docks were just made out of oak trees, and they would last, but they're not structural.
Yeah, but I was just wondering what the potential was of-
Yeah.
-using something that would be perhaps less risky for-
Yeah.
-the environment.
Yeah, the only other product that I've really ever seen used is if people are using like a fiberglass composite pile, but those have a pretty specific application, and they're quite expensive, so.
Okay, does the board have any other questions, specific questions about the findings?
No, but I am just curious about whether you've been down there to take a look since the storm.
Oh, we were there the day, we were there af, right after the storm for the site visit.
In between the two storms.
In between the two storms, yeah.
Yeah.
So, there was a significant amount of damage to Lols Cove, various wharfs and-
On the east side.
But I don't think there was any damage to the side that we're talking about here, because those things were aluminum, and they were, everything was kind of pulled out, I think.
So, just the, the nature of my business as a consultant and doing, I, I represent the interests of a lot of the different marine contractors throughout the state, so I've been in touch with them day in and day out for the last week, and keeping a pretty good tally of what, what's been destroyed, what's been damaged, who built it, how old is it, and stuff like that, and I think you'll find that the majority of the structures, they're older ones, they might have been, their elevation was less, when those wave actions come in, they pick up the deckboards, they pick the whole thing, and it, it just pops it off of its foundations. Some of the contractors, some of my, the favorite people that I like to work with, they lost one structure, and it's a testament to their build. Bob Waddle is, is right there with them, so I think the newer ones, we're building them taller, we have better materials, the contractors now have better build methods, so I think, I think it'll be just fine.
Okay, that's my question.
Just go quickly through the, the findings and so on, 15, section 15 of our, our ordinance, real quickly, we're only talking about one, one dock here, which is what's called for. The, the area is appropriate for a build like this, there are other docks and wharfs very similar to this that, that already exist. It's not going to interfere with any natural beach area, it's not going to impact fisheries at all, and, let's see if I can identify any other key areas. We've talked about the size of, of the structure, we've talked about the fact that there's not going to be any structure on the dock, it's just going to be for private use, and let's see. Vegetation, there's a, there's a pretty thick layer of vegetation between the house and the waterfront, and as we've, as you've indicated, we're going to minimize the disturbance and elimination of any kind of tree, trees to get down to where you need to for this particular project. Any other questions that the board might have?
No.
Okay, with those things in mind, I move the planning board finds that this application representing the Warren Berry Family Trust, the construction of a non-commercial residential wharf on Lot 9, map 29, meets the requirements of section 15.3 of the shoreline zoning ordinance that are applicable to the application based on the findings that are incorporated in this motion by reference. Is there a second?
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Your, your applications are always really well-done.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
They're easy to decipher, they're, your photos are great, you're, yeah.
Yeah, we always welcome comment on these, so if there's anything-
We appreciate you, do a good job.
Additional, let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, to kind of quickly wrap up the meeting, there are no minutes to review tonight, we're giving our intrepid scribe a break. She's had her hands full for the last several weeks.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
And that's okay, between illnesses and storms and whatever. Sir, do you have anything you want to add?
I do. Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I can give you a little memo.
Thank you.
I thought we had to let you go, eh?
I have informed the board of selectmen- I have informed the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, no.
That I do not intend to seek renewal of my contract when it expires in July.
Oh, my goodness.
And that if the town wants to talk about some sort of monthly kind of thing to get a transition, I'm agreeable to that, and I'm also probably agreeable to some special project kind of thing that doesn't involve routine things like planning board meetings. And the, the budget, that the Budget Committee has sent to the Board of Selectmen and they are reviewing includes provisions for a full-time planning position beginning in the, in the fall, and so that's sort of where we are.
As Harry Schuman said, I just feel like a load of hay fell on my back.
Well, I, you know, see, here's my, here's my issue, it's 20 after eight, it'll take me an hour to get home, and then, who knows what the roads will be like tonight after everything freezes up, and maybe 295 will be back open, so it's time.
Okay, well, appreciate your expertise and.
I think Christie will probably be in touch with you, I think the plan is to wait and see what happens with the Board of Selectmen's review of the budget, and then obviously town meetings, consideration of the budget. I think Christie's plan is that if the budget goes forward as proposed, she would like to start the recruiting process shortly after March town meeting.
Okay, well, we have a number of important things coming up, I did want to raise a question about, there's a workshop scheduled for 7th of February, I don't know if we have anything specific that we need to talk about, but we might want to combine that with some sort of comprehensive plan meeting in some way, I've been thinking about that, and first, the comprehensive plan, has that been officially extended to May?
I don't know the answer to that.
I, I tried to find the select board meeting.
Aren't you the chair?
I am the chair, but I'm oftentimes the last to be.
And I'll be honest and say, I don't know the answer to that, I don't even know if they discussed it at the last meeting.
I think we are not top priority.
No, I think last Thursday, there were other things that were being, I think a lot of things got postponed.
Yeah.
In the last week, that didn't occur because of events last Wednesday.
Mother nature.
And there were, there were discussions, I know, something I asked about, I was told it wasn't discussed, I don't know whether they did, but I'll check, and.
All right, well.
I think there's pretty good agreement to postpone, if you will, and the other thing, and I should make you aware of this, and Margaret's, this is Margaret's project, so the Federal Emergency Management Agency has approved the revised flood insurance rate maps, which will, which will change the designation of what areas are in what kind of flood zones and what the base flood elevation will be. The town has until June 24th, 20th. To adopt the new maps, however, as I think we talked about one time, the FEMA will also approve a letter of map revision, which will revise the flood hazard areas shown on the new fl, firms, based on the work that the town and other municipalities had done by ransom, and then the town will need to revise its shoreline zoning map, because under shoreline zoning, the areas that are in coastal floodplains, unless they are in certain development situations, are required to be incorporated in the Resource Protection District. That's all going to probably happen at a May open town meeting, which will include consideration of the updated comprehensive plan, the adoption of the firms, the revision to the floodplain management ordinance, I left that out, I'm sorry, revisions to the floodplain management ordinance, and then.
School board, right?
Hmm?
No, school board's in June.
And that's by referendum vote.
Lot of change, lot of change, lot of things coming up.
Yeah, those will be big.
Those are the big ones, yeah.
Projects, and the town is working on a way to try and make it possible for Amy to come in and say, how will these revisions impact my property? No, no, Amy Hyble.
Amy Hyble, it's all about Amy Hyble.
So you can, so you can come in.
What the?
As a citizen.
Oh.
And say, how do these changes impact my property?
Yeah.
And look at them, and that will probably be available to be done either on a computer with staff assistance or potentially on paper as well.
Good, cool.
Because there probably will, could, will be hundreds or a thousand properties who will want to know, what does this mean for them?
Yeah. I can probably picture them in my head as you drive around town.
We don't have the information for you.
All right, with those somewhat sad comments, do we have anything else?
No, just thank you, Mark, for your.
For your time.
Well, not yet, you still, you can wait for.
I know, but you know.
Six months or whatever.
Well, you know, it's always good to say thank you.
No, I've told you, Courtney, I do not.